701, welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, January 4th, 2024. Please rise for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky is absent. Commissioner Yoder?
Hello.
Commissioner Weiner?
Hello.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Vice Chair Slawinski?
Here.
Chair Whitliff?
Here.
Thank you. And we'll move down to election of officers.
Oh, really?
Okay. We will now open the floor for nominations for chair. And when you make a nomination, if you could please state your name for the record and the name of your nomination. Do we have any nominations?
I, Shelley Mamberto nominate Mark for chair.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Whitliff, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Whitliff has been nominated for chair. Do we have any other nominations for chair? And I have to ask that three times. So for a second time, do we have any further nominations? And for our last time, do we have any further nominations? So nominations are closed. And may I have a motion and a second to elect Commissioner Whitliff for chair?
I'll make a motion to elect Chair Whitliff for chair.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Put the cart before the horse, huh?
Right.
Let me get that over with.
Commissioner Yoder?
Hello. Yes, sir, yes.
Is that a yes? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Now, I'll turn that back over to you, Chair Whitliff.
Okay. This time, I will ask for nominations for vice chair. And I can make a nomination.
Correct. Yes, you can.
I will nominate Bob Slawinski for vice chair. Is there any others?
A second. Commissioner Slawinski, do you accept that position? Okay. And we need to ask that three times as well.
Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Please take roll.
Well, we need a motion and a...
I'll make a motion to elect Bob Slawinski as vice chair.
Uh-huh.
I'll second. Thank you.
And now we'll take roll.
Okay. Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slawinski?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Nomination for secretary?
I make a nomination for Marlene. It's Miss McBride there.
Yeah. There's a nomination for Marlene.
I'll second that one.
Any other? A second?
No. Commissioner McBride, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Never mind.
You accepted, Marlene?
Yes, I said yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You did.
Open up your hearing aid.
I did.
Exactly. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Please take roll.
Now, we need a motion and a second.
Okay.
A motion.
What do you want?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I thought I did.
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slawinski?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations, Marlene.
Thank you.
FDPA raise coming to you.
Where do you plan on going? Well, busy?
And then we'll nominate or nominations for recording secretary, and that is you, Marlene.
Yeah.
There are nominations for recording secretary, and that's you make the nomination for that.
For, it's Laura, right?
Yes.
Laura, I nominate Laura.
Okay.
Good. I'll second.
And do we do that? Well, we don't do that three times.
Nope. Unless somebody else really wants it.
Teresa, do you want that?
No, thank you.
Okay. You sure?
I decline.
If I could ask a question. Laura, do you work for the city, actually?
I do. I'm the deputy clerk downstairs on the first floor. Yep, I work with Heather Pefley.
Oh.
She used to work senior center with us.
She worked at senior center?
Yep, I was the director there for five years.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay, good for you.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Roger's got it.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slawinski?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Approval of agenda. At this time, the planning commission can take action to approve the January 4th, 2024 agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
By Roger, second.
I'll second it.
By Marlene, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slawinski?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Conflicts of interest? Is there any member of the planning commission with any type of conflict of interest on the approved agenda tonight? Please speak.
Our little river holdings.
None? Okay. Approval of minutes. Planning commission can approve the December 7th, 2023 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I made the motion to approve it.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
By Pam, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slawinski?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Correspondence? Any correspondence for tonight?
Nope.
None?
That is fine.
And presentation, we have Mr. Mark Miller, Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Director. Mr. Miller?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everyone. It's good to see everyone.
Happy New Year.
Good to see you.
Happy New Year, thank you. Let's take just one quick second, you know, and introduce something that we're really excited about. Nicole Kaminsky is here in the audience. She is starting her first day as an intern with the chamber. She's going to work on economic development, a recent graduate, and she has a degree in economic geography, which is going to come in real useful. So we're really happy to have her. So she's kind of my sidekick tonight, but don't ask her any questions. I mean, it's her first day, so.
Well, that's not fair.
There won't be many.
Welcome.
She's off limits. So.
That's not fun.
Why?
Well, all right, then, he's fair game. So, we wanted to give you all an update on economic development, what's going on. I have a list of projects to talk to you about, kind of anticipating some of the questions, but it's been a very productive year. So 2023 was very productive for us. You saw a lot of new businesses, projects getting completed, and we saw the impact of some of our priority projects moving forward. So there was some really good work in 2023. So here's where we stand in 2024, moving forward. I want to report that in November, 300 Care Drive, the old Mercy Hospital, was put up for auction. And I have been informed that the broker has a successful agreement. So they have someone. The broker would not tell me who, but did pass my name along and said that we can connect and find out what's next. I don't know, because I haven't heard anything since November. So that's where we're at with that one. So somebody has picked it up.
Good job.
We're waiting to work with them.
Good job.
So Gateway Project continues to undergird itself with the Brownfield plans and the work being done. They are making progress. So, you know, I expect that something will start to shake loose and move in 2024. So that's more of a prediction than an informed fact, but we will hopefully see something move. But T and the team at Little River Holdings are making progress. And I am hearing about the Brownfield work being done with the city, et cetera. Lakeside Social, that is the old Little Caesars restaurant on Arthur, Del Ave. They have worked through much of their regulatory issues with the Eagle, the environmental department. And that developer will be moving forward in 2024 with some plans and construction. So it may push back a little bit towards the summer months, but they are working towards moving that project along. Also on my list to talk about is the Emerald Cove Hotel. That is the old music vault location, 348 River Street. It was a RRC priority site for the city, and they continue to move forward. They were asking for historic preservation tax credits. They were turned down on their request, but that doesn't impact the project in terms of moving forward. It actually speeds up the timeline.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So there will be some changes in the plan, the overall plan for the building, but they are going to move forward, but they will not be seeking any kind of historic...
Preservation.
Yeah.
Financial.
So that will be what we'll see there downtown, but the plan is to continue moving forward with the hotel. So boutique hotel in the middle of River Street.
Excuse me, what do they want to do with that building again?
They're going to create a boutique hotel. So the original first plan would be five rooms that would be family oriented. And so because of the historic preservation piece, there'll be some changes to the model, but it's going to continue to move in that direction.
Are they still going to put a restaurant on the first floor of that, or did they change that plan?
You are really insightful. Pam, thank you for the question. I'm afraid I can't answer that at the moment.
Okay.
Mark, do we have a time plane on that? I mean, would...
They should begin in spring.
Of '24?
'24. Yep. So, moving on to the next downtown RRC project is Northern Hotel. Northern Hotel's 140, 1 to 150 something Washington. And Kevin Schaefer, we've been working with him through much of 2024. They have put in a grant with the county land bank to help with that project. There was such a significant gap between what it would cost to do the historic preservation, do the preservation on the building and make it useful again, and what they could make from the 13 to 15 apartments. So they want to, they're still committed to long-term apartments, so it'll be helpful for our residents and people who want to move here. But they are trying to close that gap. So we've been working with them, with the county land bank and with MEDC on potential funding. So we'll see in February, when that county land bank application gets announced, it will be from the state land bank, and we should be able to find out whether that will work. The February County Land Bank meeting will be very important, because they'll figure out who didn't get funding and then move forward. The Compo's, the Compo project, you might know this as Ringo Oil, the warehouse of cedar, first and water. That project is moving forward. It was also in the county land bank application to the state land bank. The money would be used for tearing down environmental remediation. So they'd tear down the warehouse and then build housing, up to 13 units for family homes or family condos is the plan for right now. And that, we expect to get started very soon. As soon as they get an announcement about the money and tearing it down, they're going to go right into construction.
Ooh.
So that will be that project.
Who's building that?
Could I ask a question?
No, sure.
You say, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
Yeah, and I'm hard of hearing, so that's, I can't, but, Marlene?
Who is, who is funding that and building this?
So the gentleman's name is Josh Compo, and his father and mother live in Arcadia. They have construction-related businesses in southeast Michigan. His parents have retired up here. And Josh has a house across the street on First Street, and he's also in the trades and construction. So great people. We've been meeting with them for well over, well, probably close to a year, working on this project. And so County Land Bank, Housing North, the chamber, all working together with them, and they're, they're going to get something done. So that's the positive thing. So Roger, did you have a question?
No, that was my question. You spoke of who. I was just wondering if you had a contractor already chosen, or it's just preliminary, because what I'm finding out or seeing in the papers, if we start out with a project at this point, by the time we find a contractor, we never have enough funding applied, because it's been so long and the prices go up.
Yeah.
I mean, we may want to take that into consideration on the next time we... I see we have a problem now with our, what was that? They funded X amount of dollars, and now the construction prices went up so high, they're going to have to cut back some local...
That was the Northern Hotel project.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yep. So you're absolutely right. We did have the pandemic in there, right? But labor and construction costs should get more stable. But with the Compo's, I'm not concerned about them having issues, because they'll be able to bring in or because of their contacts, be able to, they're inside the industry, so they'll make it happen and have the ability to do that.
That's a good idea, all right.
One more, or two more, actually. The last one I want to mention is Willie McKenzie. He also had a Washington Street project for housing, and he had come before you to kind of canvas your opinions, I don't know, four months ago or so.
Across the street from this Washington?
That's right.
Your...
Laundromat?
Laundromat, wasn't it?
No. This is a vacant lot.
Oh, vacant lot, okay.
A vacant lot that's across and...
Yeah, okay, okay, I remember that fellow.
No, yeah, the note, on the west side of the street.
Right on Washington, Washington and Third Avenue.
Yeah, it's right on a corner.
Yeah.
I think I lived here or something there.
He said he had the money to get started.
He does. So we, we need to reconnect with him. We've set up a meeting for the end of the month to, his other businesses have been kind of taking up his time, so he hasn't been able to focus on this. But we anticipate him getting in touch, and we are bringing in and facilitating a meeting with Housing North to talk about all the different incentive projects to help him through. I think that he will be able to get something going. He needs to decide on what it's going to be. That's the thing. So before the transition with Teresa, we were working with Katie on what the possibilities were in the downtown district, and so we just need to, we delivered what that was, and he needed to rethink about how he, how he did it. But the downtown district allows for a lot more flexibility and creativity and more units. So I think we need to get him to see how big he wants to go. But that's, that's going to be kind of the discussion we're going to have. And we're, at the end of the month, we're going to be bringing in Housing North, County Land Bank consultant, and the chamber to have that meeting. So I think we'll be able to get Willie, Willie going. Those are the big priority projects that are in the city. I'll just touch a little bit on the DDA as well, the Downtown Development Authority, the Streetscape Plan that some of you have had input on by going to meetings, have, has been drafted. We have drafted the DDA and have shared that with DDA board members. We will provide some feedback on the draft and then get a final draft, and then have some discussions about what needs to happen next. We have to prioritize what we, the DDA and perhaps the city would focus on and spend their money on, and then start to chart a course for that. So appreciate the input and the time that people took to, to come to those meetings. There's a lot of really great ideas in that plan, and I'll, I'll be completely candid, we can't afford all of them, so we have to do some choosing. So, but there's a lot of really great ideas that came out of the process. So that is the presentation for tonight. Thank you for letting me ramble on. We will take more questions. Nicole, you want to come up and help?
I've got a question.
I've got a question. Oh, go ahead, man.
On the corner here across from TJ is the young man that bought the building where the liquor store is in the bottom?
Boudreaux.
Yeah, have you heard, besides the paper, anything more about how many apartments he wants to put in, or what else he wants to do?
One telephone meeting.
Okay.
And I need to reconnect with him, see where he's at after that discussion.
Okay. I've met with him just briefly, you know, kind of his start with all of that too, so I just wondered if he knew anything more, so.
Well, yeah, so we did, we weren't in touch, and so I, I think we need to follow up with him to see where he's at and move that forward.
Good, and I was glad to see that in the newspaper. It was a good article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who bought the building?
Did I miss, when was that article in?
I didn't see it.
Um, like five days ago, four days ago, five days ago?
Okay. Josh, oh, I thought if I said his first name, the last name would come to me. He's a young man, has some ideas, but he's, he has met with the chamber. That's about all I can tell you right now until I can look at my calendar.
He owns a beer place, you mean?
Brewery, I mean, beverage company?
Boudreaux had the beverage company.
So what he did, he bought the building.
Boudreaux.
James Boudreaux.
Yeah, Jim Boudreaux's son, yeah, I know. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so James, the younger, sold the building to this young man who's going to take it and then do something with the upstairs. And so the idea is that it could be apartments. So we need to connect with him, make sure he can figure out what his assistance levels will be.
Yeah.
So with that, if I had to go farther with a question, why didn't the young man that bought the building see what he could do before he bought the building? Because now he's got a building and he's trying to fit it into a plan. What I'm saying, we forget this more than once.
Well, but I mean, he did meet with Mark, he did meet with me.
Before he bought it?
Yeah. Oh, well, he did...
No, he didn't meet with me until afterwards.
Oh, okay, so he did come in, stop in and ask some things, but I think it was such a very quick process.
Okay.
Yeah, but again, you know, being his first time doing this.
Is that what I mean?
Yeah, and he, he knows what he would like, but it's, don't know if you're going to be able to do that. So just a lot of things, learning curve, so, yeah.
A lot of times, we meet people where they're at, and, you know, we have different levels of experience when, when they come to meet us for the economic development program, and we meet them where they're at, whether they're a brand-new entrepreneur or a new developer or whatever. So, you know, I, I've, we just help people through the process and help them connect and do their own homework.
Well, it's great, he's very enthusiastic. I mean, that is, yeah, a plus.
I get a lot of those that are enthusiastic.
But yeah, we hate to give in, not to interrupt or, but we hate to give in our rules because the kid bought the building. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because he'll come in and say, geez, I bought this building, but I can't, is it okay if we let it? And then we'll say, well, gee, where did you buy the building? Yeah, go ahead. So what's the sense of having zoning if you're going to bypass?
So many of them don't know what they're going to do with it, and it takes a long time.
Yeah.
And I know even down towards the end there, someone bought that one end building, and it's still sitting empty, and it's been like three or four years, you know? It's like, we get all these, they sound like a hole, and then they just sit on stuff, you know? It's like, I know, I feel your pain, yeah, but I know, but they keep coming here with, and we had one person that came so many times, he didn't know what he wanted to do with it. Building and stuff.
Yeah, he was, that was an interesting person as well.
Yeah, and then, then they have all these ideas and stuff, but then they start stuff and don't do permits and things, and then, well, oh, I didn't know I had to do that, and it's done already.
Yeah.
We run into so many things, so I'm very dubious about all these new people and their big ideas, and, you know, it's like, show me something, you know?
So my recommendation on this is, and, you know, I'm happy to meet people where they're at, however, if you all can help, and you can help, whenever someone comes in and says, hey, I have an idea for a development, the first thing they should do is contact the chamber. And they could do it through the website, they can call us up, contact us first, because we can start to give them the information that they need to get them to the planning stages. You need to plan it first, then execute, and then construction. And so we want to encourage people to do that, but if they can have the benefit, I mean, the city, the county, the private sector businesses, the college, pay for Stacy and my salary to do this work, have the benefit of that experience and have the benefit of working with us, that would be helpful. But sometimes, you know, we get in people who, who didn't get that information until after they closed. And, you know, that's unfortunate, but we'll work with them. And you are correct, Marlene, the delays happen because people didn't do their homework before they bought the building. So we'll meet with them where they're at, and we'll go from there. All right, I've been doing this way because my ear, I only have one good ear. We start leaning over this way and see if there are any other questions.
Is he going to keep, is Jim Boudreaux going to keep his business going in the, on
the first floor?
Yes, for now.
For now?
Yes, the answer is yes.[1604.86]
Okay.
So, uh, I need to get more information on what that will, will look like, but yes.
That empty lot on Washington, what if that's owned as?
I don't know.
Which one?
He doesn't know what he wants to build on there, so.
Which one, which property?
An empty lot on Washington.
The one he wants to build on.
That, that's Willie.
He wants?
Yes, he wants housing.
Housing.
He ha, he, he's committed to housing.
Yeah.
Willie has a workforce problem. Remember, he has several businesses. And all the people who would come in and work for him need to find a place to live and they can't. So he is focused on the housing problem. What we're trying to do is get him to build as much as he wants to build. And that's the question. So we, we talked about parking, we talked about what was required and that was the, um, the thing. We, we told him, um, collectively told him that he could go as high as so many stories and everything and that actually expanded the number of units that he could possibly build. So that's where he's at right now. It's like, I can build 24 units or I can build 36. Um, so, you know, that's what we need to get, uh, get help on is getting the plan for how many, how much? What can fit in the footprint, how much parking is needed if, you know, and then go from there. So that's where we're at with him. It's a good problem to have. We're in a good place with Willie.
Yeah, yeah, he sounded like he was ready to go. I hope it gets going. Uh, one other question if I could have, oops, uh, the Olson store. How are we doing with the Olson? I went by, they're empty yet.
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Save a lot?
So, um, we had been, um, providing information on that parcel to prospective developers, uh, trying to find a good fit. We reach out and talk to Brad Olson, the point of contact on occasion. The last thing that we, we are working with the city manager on some thoughts on what to do to help that along. And so I think we're, uh, we're in a good place. We just have to find the right fit for the property. There's a, uh, substantial amount of rental income already on the, on the parcel. It's not just a, it's not just a grocery store. There's five or six things that are going on. And so, uh, that could be rolled up, uh, into a larger development or it could be, or it could be, you know, just fill the retail space. I will tell you this on retail, there's a lot of open retail space in the county. Uh, Filer Township comes to mind if you think about the strip malls.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, there are, there's, there's tens of thousands of vacant spaces. I have made attempts to recruit, um, to recruit retail or service oriented, um, businesses into town and it's, it's, nothing's clicking right now. I think it's not a very good, um, environment for retail and especially large retail. And so, um, that space is gonna have a real trouble, Olson's is gonna have trouble getting filled or leased, um, as it is now. So I think what the community could use, um, would be some sort of housing mixed use development. There are people out there who would like to invest in Manistee. I think if we can just make the right match, it might, it might be a good project. So more to come on that, but we're, we're swinging for the fences.
Yeah, yeah, you might as well.
Yeah.
I'd like to see Evil's general store, Fallmore.
I would love that too.
We got three of them now.
Breed City, yeah.
We got three of them now.
Yeah, I see that, I see that.
Also keep in mind that the first floor of Northern Hotel will be a commercial space too.
Yeah.
Uh, so there's another opportunity and that could be a smaller outfit, uh, so we're.
Little bakery, put a bakery in there.
A bakery, a little drugstore.
Yeah, a little bakery and drugstore.
So we'll figure that out and, uh, you know, I've, uh, I've tried bicycle shops. I've tried snowshoe, cross-country skiing, we've done some other things. And so we're, we're working through that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Bob, you have any?
I think we need to find a men's clothing store. We haven't had one since the Tiger reclosed, what, 20, 30 years ago?
Men's clothing, Thompson's.
Thompson's, that was about 20, 30 years ago, like, last time they were open.
20, 30 years? I don't remember that law.
Yeah, has so many empty buildings.
Newberry's, since Newberry's.
And they're like insurance and this and that. There's not much to entice people to go down there and shop. We need more shops down in that area.
You won't get them.
We wanna get some. We gotta go to the Skeggen or Traverse City for men's clothes.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody buys online.
Or Myers, go to Myers. Myers got everything.
If, if you haven't seen the news on this one yet and it's been in the newspaper, by the way, the newspaper hasn't been loading for me every morning. That's why I missed the story.
Yeah.
The news, uh, we'll have a new tour sto, a toy store. And so, um, same people who own Port City Emporium are, are going to do that, so Pat and Anita Schaefer. And, uh, so that, that's another level of retail we've been missing for a while. So, uh, it'll be good to have that, so I'm looking forward. They will probably be open around the February, March timeframe. All right, Mr. Chairman, I've talked long enough, right?
I just have a few questions.
Oh, you have questions, all right.
Oh, yeah.
And I have an update for you on Thurlbred.
Oh, yeah.
You and I might met a couple of weeks ago or, uh, we had a second meeting with, uh, Enson Classics.
Yeah.
Saleboat manufacturer or saleboat committee group, sorry. We had a meeting this morning and everything's looking very good. We've costed out the project to them. They're, they've accepted that. The next step is, uh, getting the molds from, uh, building.
Ohio, yeah.
So that could be a sticky wick if, uh, we're probably looking at.
Great news.
Well, you know, three to four to five units right, right away.
Yeah.
And then possibly one every month, which would be nice.
Nice. Thank you for the update.
We're attending the Minneapolis Boat Show, uh, in two weeks to unveil the U-23 to Minneapolis customers, which is nice. Jim and I might will be there.
Good.
Yeah, that's exciting stuff.
It is.
Um, and then, Mark, I just have the, I read it in the paper about the land bank, but if you are an, excuse me, Kennedy property, I know that's out of the city, but, you know, we do need housing and I know you're involved in that.
Yeah.
Uh, if you have anything else.
Yeah, so let me just, um, so Old Kennedy School on Parkdale Avenue is set to be a 288-unit, two-phase apartment rate market rate project. And, uh, County Land Bank put in for it and we were successful getting five, about $500,000 worth of money to tear the down, tear down the school and do remediation for environmental issues. The RFP, the Request for Proposals for the demolition, was put out this week. So, um, and it's going to set back the timeline for construction, but it, it did get put out there and so we hope that there's a successful bid selected and they can move forward. Uh, the developer was looking forward to moving in, in early 2024 on construction. So we'll, we'll just have to wait and see what happens with the bid process, so.
Did the old school bus thing go with the property or is that separate?
That's separate. So, but the, the acreage, there's 18 acres going all the way back. So that's just a front piece and then it expand out a little bit.
You know, in fact, they had an environmental issue with the, they had an environmental issue a few years back with leaks at the bus garage or tanks.
Yeah, but that was on the other property, right?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it didn't mitigate over.
That's right. Well, part of the money will be used for those kinds of things, so that's positive.
Are they looking at anybody local to tear that down with Swodorski?
They're, they're certainly welcome to do that. Swodorski's was, um, encouraged to get their certification for that and so.
That's a problem.
We're trying to, I know the County Land Bank was working with.
Yeah.
Do you think there's asbestos in that building or, or?
Well, see now there, now there again, Mark, like we were just talking, so I'm sure you have X amount of dollars funded for this remediation. Your bids went out today. They're not gonna come in for two weeks. And you know the bids are gonna be higher than what you had focused on, how much you thought it was gonna cost. So you're behind eight ball already.
My responsibility.
Might come in lower.
Yeah, you might, yeah. Hopefully they'll come in lower.
Um, Mark, did you, did you reach out to the Big Apple Bagels owner?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. So I will, I saw my. Yeah, I have her first name, uh, so I just need to call up the shop.
Okay. Any updates on potential manufacturers for Manistee area?
Okay, so, um, we still have the property, the Old Century Boat Building on Manistee Lake, uh, Ninth Street and 12th Street. I need to follow up with the, uh, Great Lakes Carriers Association to see if any of their members were interested in the port aspect of that property. And, uh, I haven't heard anything yet, so I need to follow up now that we're past the Christmas break. But that's where I'm at. Then, um, you know, nothing new on the small scale, uh, unfortunately, so, but.
Have, have you reached out to people and different companies to, I mean, we're never gonna get Smokestack Industries like we talked.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, businesses that have 20, 30 people, you know, on the, on the first level, second level, 15, you know, that creates a lot of jobs.
It would be ideal to do that. Um, I need to have a little bit more capacity to research who. As we've discussed before, the who is the real question and, and then try to reach out. But, uh, I, I haven't done anything in the last three, three to four months on that front.
Well, if I can help you on that, I will.
That would be helpful. So I, I, anybody can give me leads, like the Big Apple Bakery, I'm, I'm up for.
I'll owe you a list of.
Or Brickwills or.
Like Orianna's, you know, maybe Orianna's for, uh, the old Olson, Save-A-Lot Grocery Store.
Awesome, thank you, Mary.
Cause they have, they have two stores within the community, yeah, within neighborhoods. I mean, that's, have you been out there?
My daughter only shops at Orianna's, so, yeah.
Maybe we should. Get a cup of coffee and go.
Very cool.
And then the 2024 outlook, I think you probably hit on it, but if you have any, any other high points?
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, well, there are a number of projects that I cannot discuss yet. We've been primarily focused on trying to address the housing issues. Uh, housing will help us with, uh, with job growth and, and bringing people into the community and potentially supporting more small businesses. So, um, there are other housing projects. I've mentioned the ones that I can talk about. Uh, we have others that we're, um, that we're thinking about. Plus, keep in mind the Gateway has a housing component. So I think that there will be opportunities for that. So I think it is potentially possible to lay the groundwork for a slight population increase. We've been on the decline or just stagnant for many, many years. If we start to build homes and, and can do things like 288-unit apartment projects, people will start to see the availability and come here and move here and then start to work here.
Well, Manistee, we need to get younger, you know, as, as an area.
Yeah, yeah, that's the truth, yeah.
It's a beautiful area, as you all know, more on the retirement side.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Now you look at what's happening at Manistee Catholic Central now, you know, there in peril.
Yeah.
Hate to see anything happen to that.
Did we?
More, more young families coming into the fray helps Manistee High, Catholic Central.
It does.
Mark?
So I think the underlying, uh, goal here is to make this a, a really wonderful community of choice so that people will choose to live here. But we have to address housing. And make sure we maintain jobs. We've created jobs. But we, we need to make sure that people can live here in order to continue that. We've got new restaurants, we've got, you know, other things, uh, to do, but, uh, it's, it's, we've got to focus on housing at this point.
Marco?
Yes, sir.
You probably know or either one of you is, do we have, did the city change direction? Or do we have a direction that we're looking at? Like Mark said, it's a nice place to raise a family or, or retire. So are we looking at retirements or are we looking at raising families? I mean, do we have a direction that we're looking at?
I'm not sure that there's an answer to that.
That's something for our master plan to.
That's right.
To, to tackle, so.
I'm sorry I brought it up.
No, that's all right.
I'm on the board for the Council on Aging and I know we're, we've been desperately looking into having housing for our seniors. And, uh, that way they'll free up their homes to be put out in the community for younger people and stuff. And we're working with two different developers. Maybe we're getting closer and closer to reaching our goal.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, I've been keeping track of you. And, um, and I've been.
I'm very, I, I move around a lot, so.
I know, I know. But Marlene, I, joking aside, um, it is wonderful that the board at COA is working towards this goal. However you decide to go, we'll be there to help the developer, um, whichever developer it might be. But we know that, um, you're working with at least one that we, we know has the capacity to get it done. So however it works out and then the Archdiocese's issue of where the money goes after the sale, that's, um, that's going to be impacting, you mentioned the MCC earlier, so, um, so, you know, those are connected. But, um, you know, hopefully you all can make a, a decision and a direction because, um, having, we need all kinds of housing, not just young families. We need young families, we need middle tier, we need starters, we need people, uh, at the end of their life journey. And we need all of it. So any, any housing that gets built will be important.
The trouble with trying to bring younger people here, they can work from home and stuff, but they're closing schools. You can't have a child anymore at the hospital. So trying to induce young couples to come here and stuff and you're closing other doors doesn't help.
Does not. It does not, so.
The issue to tackle, but.
All right.
All right.
Any other questions? None?
Thank you all very much. Happy New Year. Look forward to seeing you around. Take care of yourselves.
Have a cup of coffee one of these days.
Let's do that real soon.
Sure.
And that goes for anybody who wants to do that, but we'll do that soon.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Nicole.
I'll have a coffee with Nicole.
Mark, you?
Good luck with it.
She's all yours.
Alrighty.
All right. Uh, public comments on agenda-related items? Nicole, you have any comments? None? I don't see it necessary to read it then.
No.
Just move forward. Uh, new business, 86 Washington North Channel Investors LLC, John Growth Heiss. Uh, he is not, he is not able to be here tonight. So I would ask for a, a motion to table this until possibly next month when he can get in here.
Well, until he's available. I know what's, is he sick or?
He is sick.
Okay, well, until he's available. I don't know about next month.
Well, we'll, we'll see, but we'll just throw that out there as a carrot, but, you know, can I, like a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion, Roger, second. But Bob, any further discussion? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitlev?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passed.
Uh, Mishda?
Well, first I want to welcome everybody for 2024. I just want to make sure everyone has received their packet, either picked up, dropped off or emailed, great. And hopefully everybody has had a chance to review it.
Good.
Okay, so the Mishda, I had placed in your packet, um, and I had spoke about it last meeting, that there is a maximum grant amount, um, that is being awarded for $50,000 to help with, um, several different processes, but one of the biggest things is the master plan updates. So that opens up, um, in a week and a half. And myself and Tracy Davis from Housing North, we're going to start tackling that and seeing if that we can get the funds to do that, even though we have money in our budget for the master plan. If we can get a grant and we can get that, then maybe we can do a little bit more and maybe even have a consultant or somebody come on. But I told you a little bit of my plans. What I'd like to do is get a professional photographer. I'd like to get, you know, nice binders and a few out for people in the community. Have a couple put at the library. I mean, there's some good things, some interesting things that we could do, so.
I think we even had one of your aerial photographs of places in, in the, in the master plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Gives you another perspective.
Mm-hmm, oh, yes, absolutely. So, yep, as soon as that opens up and then I'll have more information for the next meeting on that.
Sure.
Uh, old business, uh, calendar of guest speakers for 2024.
So I put the calendar together and then just highlighted for you, um, obviously what our meeting dates are. I've been meeting with Bob and with Mark, um, just kind of going over the list of guest speakers. Um, just making you aware of that's what we have tentatively right now till June. Mark and Bob and I have put together a large list, but if there's anyone that you're interested or anybody that you'd like to come with somebody else, have two speakers or just make sure that we can get ahold of them, let us know so we can put that together.
Teresa, could you, uh, do you have that list handy?
No, I do not with me, but.
All right.
Yeah, I can send that out to everybody so they can see the list, yes.
We, we can all look at it and.
Sure.
What list you're talking?
It's, uh, speakers.
Speakers list.
Is what she's talking?
Well, at the bottom it has the tentative right here, the tentative schedule. These are all the other names at the very bottom. Did you look at these? That's starting of the list.
Yeah.
So we have, um, I don't want to slaughter anybody's last name, so we have Julie Saron.
Yeah, yeah.
Sean Middleton, Lucas Richardson, Mark Fetter, Jeff McCula, Jenny Pelton, Janice Davison, Sarah Howard, Tracy Davis, Barry Lind, the L-R-B-O-I, Eric Thummel and Eric Ware.
Are you contacted these people?
Can we, uh, mention Josh Glass in the?
Yes, Josh Glass.
Yep, he's already on, oh, no, he is not on there. So yes, Josh and then, um, Tom.
Yes.
Yeah.
Those two would probably be a good one together.
Yes.
That's pretty nice of them.
Yep, the police chief and the fire chief. So Josh and Tom would be a good one. I apologize. Yep, great for catching that.
And then next month we will have, um.
Laura.
Henselman.
Henselman, yep. Yep, and then in March we'll have Madeline Lamb Johnson sign. And then April we'll have Madeline Fitzsimmons. And then May Kurt Vanderwal. And then June Bill Gamble.
I did reach out to Kurt and, uh, he left a voicemail with me. He's up for that. I just have to schedule it with his staff.
Yep, and that's why I just said tentatively, but yep, we can always switch somebody around. We have plenty of notice, so.
If I might ask you a question. If I might ask you a question, who are these people? I mean, what is their, I guess, uh?
Well.
Privilege or?
Barry Barry Lind.
Lauren.
Barry Lind takes care of the airport.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, some I know, like Laura Hanselman, what does she do?
She is the Manistee County Foundation.
Manistee County Foundation.
So that's right, that's in the Chamber Building.
Madeline Lamb?
Madeline Lamb's with Amor Signs or is it Johnson?
Johnson Sign Company, yep.
Johnson Sign Company?
Yeah.
Just be Amor's.
Used to be Amor.
Oh.
They purchased Amor Signs back last year. And then Madeline Fitzsimmons has the coffee shop downtown.
Okay.
Trophies and Millennium Decors.
Okay.
Get a feedback of what's going on on the retail end.
Okay, it, I apologize for being so slow, but I just.
Been waiting for a little bit, Roger.
A little bit.
Thank you.
Go ahead, awesome.
Thank you for your patience.
Not a problem. Then seventy-four Arthur Street, Teresa?
Yes.
There we go.
So seventy-four Arthur Street. Yes, that is, uh, two-three-one Authentic or Heritage Farms Company.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. So Mark, myself, and Jerry Blue, who is the building inspector, the three of us went out there. When we went out there, and kind of a little bit of backstory, the land use permit was closed out and no one had actually went out there to make sure everything was completed. And so with no final inspection, went out there, met with the owners, met with the staff. We took a walk through the whole area, the building. So some of the things that they need to complete, which we know with the weather. And again, being a little lenient and with myself being new and Jerry being new, you know, things just kind of got lost in the shuffle. So working with them on completing the landscape and rain garden. Additional lighting is needed. There's one spot that they had put a suggestion for a pole and a light. I suggested that they put in another one in the back area. They have to do the dumpster and enclosure. They do have some blight that's back there, a lot of debris, a lot of, all that storage that used to be there. So they've slowly been working with customers, but we need to, you know, press them a little bit more and get that cleaned up back there. It doesn't matter that people can't see it. It's still there and it's representing something that we do not want for the community. They are going to change their plan a little bit about where the gates and the fences are going to be and where they're going to be installed. Yep, I put that on the next line, any unused objects, equipment, get that out of there. We still have to go through the parking calculations with how many potential future employees, how many parking spots. They still need to do the the lines for the parking. And I realized too, it's gotten cold, they can't do that. One parking lot up at the top of where the grow buildings are at, larger buildings and storage, they need some more parking spaces up there. Just copies of some paperwork that, you know, was missed in the files that I want to make sure that we get. And so gave them until June first. Because that will bring on spring and they're starting to work on things. So that's where I've given them right now. And if they want to come back to me, ask for maybe a small extension. We'll just have to discuss that, but we need to get them moving and get this completed. And I know, Roger, that you weren't here. With me coming on new, I didn't understand that before things would come to all of you for the PC, that they would go to a site plan review. And with that site plan review, they were reviewing what they assumed were just moderate or minor changes or a phase two. With that, a phase two in the changes really should have come here afterwards. And so I think that too just got missed. And so that's why they've just been operating and we need to get these fixed, so.
I have a question about that facility. I think all of those approvals were done before I came onto the commission. But I know in subsequent reviews and approvals that we've done for grow facilities or grow buildings, we've been very strict about any odor being released. Every day I drive by there twice a day and I can only assume that it's coming from that area. So was that a stipulation in the original? Was, okay.
It was, and Mark and I have been reviewing some of that. And I have asked for some documentation from them. I've sent them a couple emails, no one has gotten back to me.
When we walked the property, it was ready to face.
Yes.
I drive by the.
Yes, yeah, so the filtration system that I have in my file is not an updated or current one that they have there. We know that they just newly installed another one. But, yeah, again, why didn't that come to us? Why did I not see that? Yeah, so.
I think we even knew that they were growing up there, did we?
Yes.
Yes, they, yeah, they came to us.
Okay.
How about that one by the lake?
Supposed to be vented properly, but.
Right.
We'll get to that, so I got a little news on that, so.
Yeah.
On the site plan review, I know we did talk about it when you and I and Bob met. About getting our PC members back on that board.
Correct.
I recommended Bob and Pam for site plan review.
Yeah.
Okay, you know the real estate. So I, those are two good matches.
I think for a couple of years.
Because years ago Roger used to do it.
Yeah, I was, I used, yeah, well, after forty years, that was pretty much on all.
Yeah.
There wasn't much that was.
Look at where we are today.
Is that all on seventy-four Arthur?
Yes, yep.
And fence permit?
I can actually check on the permits in buildings that we've approved in such standards. I don't know if anybody ever did.
Well, and again to you a little bit, Roger, that when I issue a permit, I make sure that I know the next year, so if it's January, so I know in December I put it in my folder. Plus I have it on my calendar, plus I have it reminded me in BSNA software. That by that time in December, I go back out to visit that. I take completed pictures, I do a walkthrough, talk to them, see if they're happy with it, especially like with the construction or contractor, and then I close that out. Those are my practices, that's what I've always done in the past. So that's what I'm doing. But some of these, a lot of these were closed out or just stagnant. And I don't know about some of these until all of you bring them to my attention. So I know what I need to go look at, you know, what's happened, so.
Open a can of worms either, because God forbid.
Well, and I, you know, and I've also been doing things gently.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Like now with these grow places and they had all these stipulations. But apparently they're not being applied, you know, they're not doing, complying to everything. I mean, is there a thing that, like, after a year or two years, somebody goes back and reinspects to make sure everything is in compliance?
Well, that is one thing. I've noticed when either the site plan review or the PC, it's actually the permits open for two years. But, so what I have in there, like this one, six months. It's a reminder that I need to keep going out there because you cannot forget about that. The next thing is the state has such strict regulations. And then also we have, and Laura can probably help out, with taxes, you know, if their taxes are not paid.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that's another thing. So there is a lot of checks and balances.
How often does the state check them?
Do you know that? I don't.
Yeah, I, and I don't know either.
Two years? I don't know if it'd be two years or yearly, I don't know.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they have to show us proof. And then I know Heather gets a lot of that information too. So Heather's very knowledgeable about that, so.
Yeah. Alrighty.
Fence permit?
We had talked a little bit about that, Mark and Bob and I. I've had some pros and cons just from staff here at City Hall, a couple residents. I guess I want to start the conversation of fence permits again. I really see a need for them. But I've had people tell me that I'm opening up a can of worms, if I can quote you, Roger.
Yeah.
So I guess I want to hear from all of you again, should we decide to do this? Should we have a fence permit? We talked about twenty-five dollars. I've gotten the ordinance from the past, I've given that to, emailed that over to Tim. Do we want to continue this? I know some things that I had heard before that maybe there's not a lot of time for it. To me, it's something very simple. And I also believe if somebody is just going to be doing a replacement fence, sure, we would like to give them a permit but not charge them for replacement. But just so that I'm not getting phone calls from neighbors, what are they doing? What's going on? They're on my property. And that's the things that I've been getting. And so I do that little chart every month on my desk that said fence. And I put a one, a two, a three, and a dash, and it's numerous. So when I get those things, that's when I bring them up to you.
I'm, I'm, I just have a question, like, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but what are the pros versus the cons of getting a permit? If if people can't be good enough neighbors to go talk to their neighbor and say, hey, by the way, I'm getting a fence, it might be on your property.
Right.
How is a permit going to improve that?
You have to have a survey.
They're going to ensure that the fence is going to be on their property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the issue, and surveys are hundreds of dollars, so.
But the cost of a fence, if you're able to afford a fence.
Yes, replacing existing fences is easy.
Yes.
Pretty much there and they can actually prove, take pictures, say, here's where the fence was, here's where the new one is.
Right.
And see, with a fence permit, when it would come in, I'd just tell them, you don't need to be home. Is it all set that I can come out and take my pictures? Or if they say, oh, we've already started taking down, then I'll go this afternoon and take my pictures and do that. The other thing is, you know, with neighbors around and all of a sudden somebody just starts putting up a fence, they need a survey because right away that's going to be a conflict. But also to make sure that everybody is on the right path, that they're not putting, and I don't know if this is a rule here or not, I don't remember, the good side out, the the bad side in. Also, if they have the right height, that's a big issue, especially with corner lots, fences on corner lots, so.
Okay, so it's more about educating the homeowner versus, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea.
So you want like a straw pole, Teresa?
Yes, yep, or any more discussion? Like I said, we don't spend a lot of time, but it's just something I feel that we do need, I really do.
As long as the cost is minimal.
Yeah.
You put a handle on it with all these guides and surveys and when you can and what side by getting a permit, at least they would know that.
Well, we we had one before when Denise was here.
I had to get one, yeah.
And then we decided to get rid of it because she was overworked.
Yeah.
So it it lied dormant for about, what, five, six years, probably eighty more. And Teresa's been out on some calls already.
Oh, yeah.
About this. I I feel that we do need a fence permit. Twenty-five bucks is great. And if if they are replacing, you know, simply send you pictures of before and after.
Yep.
Then then it's all documented.
Yeah.
Like when I put my fence in, the neighbor was raising heck about saying, okay, are we, are you putting it on my property?
Yeah.
I pulled, I had her come with me, pulled the metal detector out. We dug up the corners and had her stand on one side and the other, oh, it is on your property.
You called a surveyor then?
Yeah, I called that surveyor. Name was the plumber out of the corner.
Yeah.
You know, one thing that maybe we can add to that permit is, like I had, it happened to me on surveying stakes. You know, and when we were talking, surveying stakes you can't take out. And my neighbor.
Took them out.
The company pulled the surveying stakes. We should probably have that in there too if it's not.
Yeah.
I never thought of that. Why would they do that, Mark?
I've seen.
That's a damn good question.
I've seen people pull them out of their yards and pulling away.
Yes.
The neighbors have pulled them out, I've seen my rearview mirror pulling away from a job site. I'll see the neighbor come out and pull a corner.
Oh, absolutely, I've already heard that from residents here, yes.
That actually is against law.
Oh, it is, I know, yeah.
Well, that one I was able to, that one I was able to have ticketed because I watched.
Oh, my goodness, I didn't realize. So what would then, would you make a list of what you would ask that person for the permit? That they would have the surveyed and they would have.
Yep, it is up to my discretion if I require them a survey. And another thing is too, a lot of times you can get away with just a one-sided survey.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, between three, four hundred dollars sometimes. Obviously depends on the lot and where they need to come from, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, in a neighborhood, I bet you last summer that they must have put up, I bet you, four or five different fences, you know, two different yards.
Yeah.
I mean, they were big backyard, they must have spent dearly.
Oh, yeah.
It must have cost. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I'll go, you need a motion for that?
No, no, don't, just a straw pole, yes, no.
Yeah.
I'm a yes.
Yeah, I'll go for a permit.
Yes, yeah, I think I paid twenty-five dollars when I got mine, it was a big deal, you know.
Yeah, right.
We were just enclosing the rest of the yard, so we were just finishing off.
Well, considering a driveway permit, seventy-five or a hundred dollars just for the driveway permit.
If you're going to build a fence, like the lady said, I mean, you can afford twenty-five dollars for a permit.
You would think.
Make sure it's on the right.
No, it's just to protect everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Lessen the load on Teresa of being called out.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, master plan, community profile?
So in front of you, I had placed this little list here that some of the questions that I had asked last time. So some of the best history stories in Manistee. So I compiled everybody's list and I might have added a couple in there. So I just wanted to, we'll just read over, the great fire on the same day of Chicago, Wisconsin. I didn't know about the Wisconsin one.
Chicago.
Yes, so very interesting. The salt and paper industry. History of Century Boat Company. The man-made lake dugout, I didn't know that it was used for Henry Ford for glass for the vehicles. So places everyone should know about in our city. We have the Ramsdale Theater, all the different churches and the architect of the churches. Riverwalk and all the trails, all the parks that we have here. The museum and culture in Lake Michigan. And those are good. Famous women and men in Manistee. So we have our obvious James Earl Jones. Olaf Swenson, can anybody tell me about Olaf Swenson?
That's my favorite, my husband's favorite story.
Okay.
Olaf Swenson made his money by selling vodka to the Russians, believe it or not, back in the day. But he was so little liked that he was given sixty sled dogs to bring into the United States. He's the first person who brought sled dogs into the United States.
Wow.
And he was born in Manistee.
Neat.
That's my husband's favorite story.
I have a Siberian, that's nice.
I have a Siberian too, yeah, I'm on several Siberians, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And with all those sled dogs that we have in Michigan, it's just, it's kind of cool that he's from Manistee.
Yeah.
So Olaf was born in Manistee?
Olaf was born in Manistee.
December sixteenth, eighteen eighty-three, yep.
Was that right?
You can look it up, he's there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I believe, I.
It was just, it's just a weird story my husband found, but, yeah.
It's very cool.
He's the one who brought all the Huskies into the United States, so. Because they weren't allowed before he had.
That's so cool.
I did not know that, there you go.
So we have Tony Trucks. Frederick Ramsdale. Lorraine Conway. Now, what's, who is Lorraine Conway?
Uh, that's a good question. Depends who you ask.
She was a mayor.
Yeah, she was mayor.
All right.
Oh, she was, was, she was the first female mayor.
Let's leave it at mayor and be done.
That's true. The touchy spot.
Louis Sands. Who's that?
He was a lumber.
Sands Company.
Sands Park.
Okay.
You think, you got Sands Park. You got, uh, there's a few subdivisions with Sands' name in it.
Okay. Yes.
A developer back in eighteen.
Okay, founding member.
Yeah, nineteen hundred, one millionaire here, lumber company.
Okay. Fred Green.
Governor of Michigan, thirty-first governor of Michigan.
Right.
Is that right? What did he do in Manistee?
He was born.
Yeah, born here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Really? Him and Olaf here?
Yep.
They're up there for you.
Uh, Dorothy Downtown.
That's another one. Yeah, me.
I put that one in.
I was going to say.
Yes. She was born here in Manistee, and she was President Ford's secretary. Yes, for many, many years. Yep. I thought that was very neat. So, what we need to do still is the ideas for the two thousand sixteen to the present for community profile. We still need to narrow down, writing a couple paragraphs of what's important. I know that was on my to-do list to have something and bring it to all of you. I just apologize, I've not had a lot of time, so, still working towards that.
Some I think we should have on the best history stories.
Yep.
The lumber industry.
Oh, yeah.
Lumber was here before the salt.
That's right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We had the most lumber barons and millionaires in the capital.
Totally agree there.
Bigger population than we have now.
Is this list meant to go to a larger audience?
No, just to kind of stimulate all of you and just give, give us some knowledge. And I was just very interested in the male and the female who, especially the female. I mean, there's a whole nother target and area that, so that's why I thought, or I found Dorothy. So, I thought, yeah, we need to think about some other people. So, learn something about our city that we have not known about.
You got Frederick Ramsdale. What about TJ Ramsdale?
See, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I can go back forty years. I scored twenty-four points.
Roger, yours.
Yeah. You're going to be on here, Roger.
Paper.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's a good idea.
Harry Anderson. Harry Anderson, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Easy, make sure you stop.
Oh, yeah.
Now, who was Harry Anderson?
Night Court.
Night Court?
Original Night Court.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The judge.
Is his daughter running it now?
No, the, his actor daughter.
I think so.
Just the one that's playing his daughter, that's all.
Oh, I thought you said it was, oh, no, okay.
She just plays it.
Plays his daughter, okay.
Dave Campbell played the Tigers, sixty-eight Tigers.
How about Canfield? Wasn't there a Canfield, a big timer on here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, he was a logger or something in Manistee. Canfield Lake or something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I feel like a schmuck because on our list of, uh, everyone should know about in our city, Firehouse.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
That's true.
They worked hard on getting that. I saw the stack of paper for that. It was like three.
Yeah, Fred did a lot of work.
Oh, it was huge, yes, that, all the documentation.
He had to come up with so much.
Yeah.
Fred spent like two or three years getting it together.
Yeah, it was a long time.
And still operating, it's wonderful, you know?
Yeah, beautiful. Took the tour.
Paid the tax, yeah, pay the taxes for it.
Smaller buildings around, but they're not used to spray. So, on, uh, the ideas for the two thousand sixteen to present community profile, what do you want us to do with Teresa?
You want to think of it?
Yeah, we had talked about last, you know, some of the things, a couple. I took, um, like two or three ideas from each year, but I need to compile that and then bring it to you guys. That's what I need to do. I just have not had time. Nope, I've got the list from last time, I think. But do you have some, a couple, real quick?
If anybody has them.
Yeah, email, email them over to me. That's right. Just like any properties that you know of, that you have questions on or want to know if the permit's open or not, please email me on any of those or questions. Because it's just not, the week ahead of time, I'm doing PC. I'm working on it all month long. And as Mark and Bob know, I have my list, to-do list, every month, you know, what I need to work on.
We've got a ruling too, just so you know, as far as deadlines for coming to the planning commission.
Yes. Oh, yes.
The last three days.
Oh, no, no.
If you're not in ten, five, what is it? Five or ten days?
Yeah, I think it's like fifteen days even, yeah.
You know, let them push you.
Yeah, they try to.
Well, I know they will, too. They'll try.
Yep.
You tell them Marlene said, and they'll back off.
All right.
Okay.
Y'all set the entries?
Yep, I'm excited.
And public comments? Nothing?
Give her a break tonight.
Now, she's having second thoughts about working with Mark.
Why did you come to Manistee? God, girl.
Goals from Manistee.
God, from Manistee.
Oh, because, oh, you're from Manistee.
Oh.
Now, you see, you came back. Now, that's what we do here.
He's a saver.
Yeah, he's a saver. Hey, go, I've been there. Alumni, goddamn right, cool savers. I could sing the song.
Take his microphone.
What do we got?
Reporting reports?
Yeah, reports.
Yes. So, you can turn to the permit reports.
Permit report.
It's been very quiet with them.
So, I wanted to throw this out there, just so we can see how the year is gone. I'm hoping it's quite up to date, but hmm, I don't know. Yeah. So, that first group is all the building permits that were issued. That totaled six thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars, twenty-six cents. So, I went from January first to December twenty-sixth for that.
This is really great because we've asked for something like this. And people will ask you, well, you're on the planning and zoning, don't you? I said, "Yeah, but we don't know what all is until it comes before us. We don't know."
Oh, right.
So, we're always the last to know about all of these things. This is great.
Okay, well, good. Well, I just, I am, I'm nervous because I, I don't know what was done before me. So, I, I can give you the information that I have in there. So, we've got, um, the next permit is the certificate of appropriateness. And again, that's for the year, and that totaled a thousand dollars. So, with the certificate of appropriateness, that's, um, through the historical district committee. And those, um, are like a prerequisite before they go to the actual permits and everything. So, it's just asking, okay, we need you to review this. Mark Feder is a big help with that. And so, that's what those are issued for. The next, we have, uh, the demolition permits.
Excuse me?
Sure.
At the bottom, you have total fees a thousand for that appropriateness?
Yep.
So, I'm assuming they have to pay for this?
Yes, they do.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the next is the demolition permits. Yep. So, that's one thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars for six permits.
Now, these are the burnt-out houses, Mark told, that we had around.
Um, there is, on Davis Street, there is one.
One.
Or the demolition.
Causeiosko. Yeah, the one thousand one causeiosko. That still has to come down.
All right, okay, okay.
The three ninety River Street is the, um, not the Emporium, but it's the old dentist office, Woolworths.
Dr. Gardine's office.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Gardine's office.
Yeah.
Yep. And actually, that's not for the building. That demolition permit, um, actually, I was going to talk to you about for my HDC. That's going to be the canopy or the, that roof, that metal that comes out. Um, you need to come to my HDC meeting to request that you get a demolition permit for that so we can see what he plans on doing and what kind of sign and all of that. So, because it's a real hazard right now. It looks like it, with the snow load, it could possibly fall. So, I actually just approved that today, or they approved it yesterday. Yes, yeah. And what he's finding out is it was drilled into, into the, um, brick or the overlay of brick in there. And this is very, very weak. So, we've had Jerry out there. We've had the sign company out there. We're, he's going to get cranes. I mean, it's very lengthy process and going to be a lot of work, a lot of money to do.
Building since.
Just like both of them are in there.
Oh.
Okay, okay, yeah, sure. Well, you don't think about twenty years down the road, and that's where he's at with that, yeah.
Well, nineteen fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Actually.
Yeah.
When that was put up.
The old Woolworth store.
Yeah.
Woolworths.
Teresa, when is the, uh, HDC meetings?
I had it Tu- Tuesday, right?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry, four o'clock. First, yeah, before this, day before this.
All right, all right.
Yeah, yesterday already. Isn't that terrible? Like, two days ago. Yeah, yesterday.
There's two of them on First Street.
All right, so those are demolitions. Okay, very good, very good.
Three eighty-eighth First and three oh five First, I can't.
Oh.
Then that would be Jerry Blue, so I, well, if it is in the historical, I, I don't know what were the ye- oh, we don't know the dates. I don't know. Yeah, I don't have the dates in there.
The three eighty, this side of. The other one.
Well, the one has to be by the flower shop there, the DAV building.
Yeah.
First Street.
Next is Shell.
Yeah, the old Shell.
That's got to be the three oh one.
Yeah, that, they got equipment there. They're taking stuff out of the building, so they must be getting ready.
I think that's through the land.
Pair that down.
Well, and it also might just be the demolition in the interior.
Right.
They still could possibly keep the outside, but I, yeah, I don't know.
I didn't think that building was, I thought they were going to take the whole building down.
Oh, okay, maybe.
Three eighty-eighth's the one next to the library.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Oh.
The house, right.
It's a house on First, yeah.
Yep.
Davis and six one six Ingleman.
Now, do we make a decision what they're planning on doing with the property after they take the house down?
Nope.
Okay.
No. They're going to use that for some, something with the library.
Well, yeah, I assume so.
And they want to put a tech building in there for technical.
Oh.
Update your stuff.
Oh.
I don't know that one.
Okay.
What is it?
Six one six Ingleman, so how?
Oh, no, that's on Davis.
No, this is Ingleman, six one six Ingleman.
Oh, yeah, that's across from Morton's Hall. Mrs. Gocheck's office. Okay.
Oh, yes. I think that's part of the land bank, and they got the demolition permit, isn't it?
Looks like a new second.
Yeah.
What building is that?
It's.
An old house, right?
It's an old, old.
Yeah, old, old house. Has that asbestos siding and, and.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Bless you, Roger.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Driveway permits?
Yep, driveway permits. So, we have a hundred and twenty-five dollars for those, five of them. Uh, the next are the different land use permits. So, as you can see, next page for that, forty-three of those, um, seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. We're now getting right back on track with rental inspections. So, Jerry Blue has got, um, the city divided into three different sections. With the three different sections, he's starting with section one, which is north of the river. And with those, um, I believe he goes out every three years to do the rental inspections. So, they're divided into the three groups. So, then, we've, uh, put together, um, so far, several, several letters. So, the first month, we do a chunk, then the next month, the next month. Where we want to get to with this is myself and Jerry are going to be getting, um, laptops if we need to work from home. or Jerry's also going to be having a laptop or tablet to work out in the field. And with that, and with this new BSNA software that we've been doing the training and everything with, Jerry could actually literally be out in the field, be at a rental inspection, do everything on the tablet. We're looking into getting a small little printer, he can do it there or email it immediately. That way, he doesn't have to take the time to come all the way back to the office, remember what he did for the day or for the week, do it on Fridays or anything, get it done, get it sent out right then and there. And then BSNA reminds him of when it's going to come up again, so that's what we're doing.
If somebody moves out of the rental, does it have to be re-inspected before?
No, nope, does not. Yep. So some of them, you know, that have been on the rental list, um, he didn't even know where some of them had even been rent, or looked at or inspected for five years, some of them maybe did six months ago. It's been a mess, he's been working very hard on it.
And I imagine there's a few out there that aren't on the rental list.
Yes, yep.
And I know at one time, it had only be, had, could be the family renting, you couldn't sublet to other people.
Oh, wow.
Inside the home, you know, because some of them just pick in anybody, you know? And that's quite a bit over on the other side of 31, you get, I don't know how many people living in a house.
Yeah. So we've got the 59 total permits, but like I said, that's going to keep going up, and that was $930.
What do they charge for rental inspection?
$90. Yep. And also that we found out, um, through SafeBuild, is SafeBuild was charging $90, but only for six months. SafeBuild also, when they would go out, they would schedule it, demand the person be there, but if the person was not or was late, they'd reschedule it and charge $100 to come back. So we have gotten so many residents thanking us for having a building department and a planning and zoning department back in this, this area, you know, back in the city, and helping the community. We've just heard nothing but positive things, so.
Should have never left, they should have never cut yous loose, but that was a whole nother story. But yeah, yeah, it's best to be back.
So lastly, we've got the sign, 15 of them, for $600.
All right.
So.
This is really nice, I appreciate it. Now, you're going to do this on a monthly basis?
I could, yes, absolutely, monthly, or quarterly, or whichever, yep. Maybe monthly, that way we can talk about anything that does show up new, you know?
I don't know what, it looked like a lot of work, but.
Oh, no, no, not for these. Nope, and it also just, like I said, keeps me fresh, and maybe I'll tweak it to put like the dates on it too, so then we know for each month, do it by date order.
Jeez, yeah, I mean, don't, you know, overload yourself.
I know this is work for you, but this is really great.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I know, Marlene, you had asked before about it, so it's something I've, I've noted, and it's taken me a little bit of time.
No, it's nice to know what's rental and what's not, you know, and stuff, and.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Different things that happen with rentals, when they get lost in the wayside from, we've had so many changes and building inspectors and all that stuff, so this is great.
Yep, and we've just compiled the list too, that I asked Jerry to get together for me, of all the rental, or the, yeah, the, all the landlord's list.
Oh.
So I've got that, yes, and all the names, so we've just compiled that, and, yep. So next, maybe we'll put together which ones they own, so it's, it's a process, so.
Yeah, yeah.
There's going to be ones that still slip through the cracks.
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that's true. Well, it sounds like this, you and Jerry are pretty tight, is he then, he's the building inspector?
Inspector, yep, he's a building inspector.
He's here in the, in the building too?
Yep, yep, right across the hall from me, yes. We started the same day.
Oh, okay.
So we're two peas in a pod.
Okay, so we're both learning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Weed shop, our weed shop?
Yes, the O U I D shop, um, their sign, yeah, they've got that temporary, like vinyl or ne, nylon or whatever sign it is, so, um, actually, a little funny story behind that. As soon as Jerry and I went for our first visit to the, um, 231 Heritage, um, pot store, we just had our little, we've got badges now, so everybody can recognize who we are, we have business cards, we're very professional. But go in, you know, just say, hey, we're here, we're new, doing this. Soon as we left that one, several phone calls from all the others. Oh, we, we have to get together with you about our sign. Oh, we heard that you were over there, you know, you can come by and stop by anytime. And then the other one calling me, well, we just want to make sure that we have everything done, and so it was great. So that worked and did that, we didn't even know that we were going to do that, have that much presence.
You stirred your pot.
Yeah, well, but that's okay, and you know, the other ones, we have stopped over and just said, hey, want to take a look at the place? We haven't been here, checking it out, introduce ourselves, so, yeah, and I've gone over to the library. I mean, a lot of businesses around here, that's what I've been doing.
Yeah.
So was Jerry.
Good communication between you and the operator of the business also.
Right, right.
And it also lets us aware of what's happening with the business.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, you beat me on my question, Teresa.
Oh, okay, what?
On, on we, on the signage.
Oh, good, good.
Which brings up a question, um, Meds Cafe would be visited 231?
Yep.
The train, I want to say.
Yes.
The Tressel, that.
Tressel, yes.
Yes.
Called Tressel.
Yeah, anything, that went to Jerry, right?
Yes, yep, and, um, and that too is, Blight right now is with the police department, and they've just gotten a few new, um, officers.
Really?
But Blight has always kind of been with the police department. What, we still have to have a, a good conversation about it, but we don't know if we might be kind of taking that on or hiring somebody part-time to do that, but.
Really?
It's, there's a lot out there. It's, you can get some income from it, from, you know, ordinances or violations and tickets. It's showing, again, respect, what we expect out of people, what needs to happen. And not that it's not important, but police officers, in the summertime especially, when there's a lot more visitors, they're pulled for other things, and so that kind of gets in the wayside. Now, I know there's an app out there too, that you can take a picture, like, for example, um, I've taken a picture of campers that have been on the main road, and they've been out there more than a week, they shouldn't be, so I take the picture, and then that gets sent to the police department, the police department can go and check out who's license it's under, what house, and all of that. But my past experiences, my past jobs, I wrote the tickets, and I used to do that. But of course, I don't have time for that, but, you know.
We could get your pad.
But, but, um, yeah, so maybe we might be pulling that in, or it might stay there. But with, again, with the BSNA software and training, we just opened that up, so now the officers right now, Jerry and I, all of us can go into that Blight and see all of that, and we're all on the same page, and we can enter that into the system, see what their offenses were before, and now we're able to track those things.
We have so much Blight, and it's disgusting in this day and age with educated people, that people live so poorly like that. And you, you complain, and it, it's like we have all these rules and the, and things that they have to comply with, and it's never enforced, so it's like talking to a blank wall. I mean, you beat your head against it, nothing's ever enforced. So we need somebody who is going to enforce.
And as I said, maybe a retired police officer, retired security officer, um.
Yeah.
Somebody that's energetic, maybe wants to work part-time, I mean, so these are things that we're in the conversation of.
We were too short, two police officers when you spoke here.
Yeah.
I mean, you, what do you expect, you know?
I know.
Something for downtown line.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, like you say, if they hired a couple, that's a good idea, but.
Yep.
Like you say, before spring, get something cleaned up.
All right, well, let's move along.
Yeah, yeah.
Michigan Planning and Zoning News.
Yes, so with this, um, if you want to take a look at Page 4, bring this home and have some reading. In there, well, I should say, Page 4 is where it says the best practices for making sound and defensible land use decisions. There's a, um, article in there about look to your master plan. So I saw that in there, and best decision makings, all of that, so Page 4 and 5 of the best practices in there. So I'd just like to point that out, a good article to read, but, you know, see if there's anything else that you find interesting.
Yeah.
CPA meeting scheduled for January 25th?
Yep, at 5 o'clock, so Shelley.
I was going to say, I don't think I got.
Oh, maybe not, well, but I'm also sending out an official invitation for it too. Yep, that is going to be, um, January 25th.
24?
Yeah, I don't know the, the date.
January 25th, I can look it right here.
25th?
It's a Thursday, yep.
At what time?
At 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I got it, good.
Where, here?
Here, yep, here.
And last but not least, Historic District.
Yes, just a couple updates. When Mark was up here, he talked about the toy store. And that's going to be going into the shop of Heritage Square. That's the actual name of the building, the old, pronounced Woldrith or?
Woolworths.
Woldrith, okay, so I believe he's got, um, nine office spaces in there now for rent. So he's got the, um, an attorney, somebody who's going to be suddenly knitting, got the toy store, um.
Got an accountant in there.
Who?
He's still got an accountant in there, doesn't he?
Yes, the accountant, yep, CPA and attorney, somebody who's going to be doing nails, a photographer, actually, in-house photography, so many. So he's actually the one that went to my HDC meeting last night and presented what he needs to do about that canopy over the top that we had just talked about. So he came in, talked about that, talked about, um, what he wants to do with replacement, what kind of sign he wants, so a lot of things. So he came and talked yesterday about that, so I wanted to give you an update. The other big news is 383, um, the Ramsdale Inn, uh, they're going to be getting a new handrail. It was approved about seven years ago with the meeting minutes and everything else, but somebody has donated the product, donated the time, money, everything to put that up. So going down that slope, now you're going to have a handrail all along the side.
Nice.
Alongside the building?
Yes, yes.
Alongside the building?
Building, yes.
How, how far up to go?
Oh, most of it.
Really?
Yeah, most of it, yeah, as much as they can. Yeah, up to the.
That's going to be a piece of that, people work at.
Yes, yep. So since it was already presented several years ago, they had passed it and everything, I went ahead and I signed off on it, and I told them last night that, hey, this is what's going on and happening, it's great, so. The last thing about my HDC is, um, Lee Trucks is no longer the chair. He decided to decline, and they had nominated Catherine Kenny as the chair now. Yeah, yeah, so that is my news, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Laura, you have anything?
I do not.
No, okay. Move along to member discussion, start with Roger, welcome back, Roger.
Yes, I'm glad to be back, uh, my condition is in a holding pattern. I've completed all my treatments of radiation and chemotherapy. Now we wait for three months to get a CTI scan to see if, what condition, my condition is in, I guess.
Isn't that a song?
But, uh, it should be. But other than I'm glad to be back and glad to meet you and the young ladies, and hopefully I'll be here for, like Mark said.
Three, three more years.
Three more years, I just signed up, so. But thank you, Mark.
I'm glad everybody's back and healthy, and I, I'm happy with all the extra work you, you put out for us and that it's really nice to be educated on what's happening in our community, that we're not sitting in the dark, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Shelley?
Congratulations, you're on, being really lucky. And I have nothing else.
Okay, Pam?
Just want to reiterate what everybody has said.
Bob? Glad to see Roger up and about.
Yep.
And I thought he's still hanging around over at Bear Lake Sports cheering undergrad kids, like he's supposed to be.
Oh, yeah. Out at last night.
Good, and everything seems like we're doing pretty good, I'd like where we're going with that, back on the site planner review committee stuff. That's, that, I've always felt that was long overdue.
Yeah, who took that? Wait, from the city hall.
Dad Taylor. Dad took, Taylor took away from us.
Okay.
Because I remember you and I used to go on it all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, one other thing, Pam and I are going to be joining, and pretty soon here, we were going to be getting an invitation for the Park and Rec, or Park and, for the master plan, the beach master plan. That's right, beach master plan, so we're going to start new meetings and working on that too.
Well, now there again, didn't we do it while you weren't here, I know, but beach master plan about three or four years ago?
There was a program we looked at, it wasn't really a master plan, but.
It wasn't a plan.
No.
This is going to be mainly with DPW and Spicer, so, and then Pam and I volunteered, and we'll be doing that too with them, just for some extra input, so.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Yep.
So it sounds like you have some spare time.
Someone's going to keep them in line.
Oh, absolutely.
In your spare time, yeah.
You want all the sales? Well, I just have a couple of different, couple of things, uh, Master Citizen Planner credits for 2023. I did mine, I received verification from Michigan State, Bob, did you?
I finished them, but I haven't heard anything back.
I would email Kara Kelly on that, so.
I completely, I do, actually.
And then, I don't know, Marlene, you still have to do yours?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know we had one coming up, and, and I don't do computer, I'm the old gray mirror here, you know? But, um, I know Katie set me up one time at, the building's over there on Ma, on Maple.
Okay.
And then I got there, and then the system was all down, I never got, and she was going to call me when they got it back up, so. But I, um, I would like to take those classes, I've had it for years.
Or even at the library, or here, yeah, absolutely.
Just, um, yeah, because there is a $60 fee. Now, you, you paid for me, did you pay for everyone, is that 60 bucks for everyone?
It's.
Or is it per person?
Per person.
Okay.
Yep, per person, but we've got that in our budget too.
Budget, so.
All you got to do is yours.
Is it something that is, can we do it at any time?
No, I'll pay it, I've got the credit card, so I'll pay for yours. Just all you have to do is email me, and I'll set it all up for you.
Six hours.
Yeah.
Oh, you have?
The fun part is staying away through. Yeah, I mean, some are interesting.
Recompensation.
I'd be interested.
Oh, sure. You can, but I'm saying, all you have to do is tell me when you want to take the class, and I can set that all up for you. And I can pay for, for the credit, on the credit card, so I can do that.
Yes.
Yep. Before, yes.
I did.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
And then the 2024 Master Citizen Planner, whenever that comes about, we can tackle, we can all.
Why don't we do, if there's that many of us, why can't we get together and do it as a group thing and help Marlene out on a video?
We can, uh, but there are, um.
We had them in this, a bunch of them.
That would be the same, it would be an hour.
Oh.
They're each an hour, yeah, or about an hour? Yeah.
I mean, everybody, I mean, if anybody, you know, there's four or five of us that want to do it.
I mean, it's easy for me, I just, at night, sit at my office and.
Well, this might be a suggestion, um, we've got that large screen TV downstairs in the break room, and the computer, and you couldn't just do it there.
Or there.
Yeah, several people can, or all of you, I mean, it fits like 10 people.
You have to watch for, uh, open meetings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
How many people are in time?
Yeah, three and three or less, so.
Yeah, three at a time, yeah. But I mean, you know, we're all doing it, you can buy one set of.
When they came from Michigan State, we had how many people in here doing all them?
But they were all, in an open public, if we're just doing it as our commission.
Right.
Got to do it in a public place.
Yep.
Okay, well, so we'll work on that.
Okay, yep.
Um, and then the only other thing, Teresa, I have for you is the agendas from other commissions for the packets.
Oh, yes.
Do we, do we need, well, let me ask, because Teresa has a lot to do, do we, do we want that? I mean, we can come in and pick them up if you want to read them.
The what?
What are you talking about?
The other, the other commission minutes.
Oh.